Tracy Hens, I am currently the principal of the middle school. So I welcome you. This is my 16th year as an administrator in Hopatcon. And every year, I am the lucky one that gets to be the moderator for Meet the Candidates Night. And I must say, each year, it has been a pleasure. I do go over some ground rules with everyone, so that I don't go principal on you. But it has been a really wonderful experience. And you know, I'm very thankful for the volunteers that do the difficult job of being a board member. We know it's not easy, so we thank them for that. And we respect them for that. And that's what I ask for tonight. I do want to thank HEPTO, our Hopatcon Elementary Parent Organization, for hosting this evening. Thank you very much. I'm going to go over how this works. So we have four candidates this evening. And I just like, oh, we lost one. There's, in the back coming up here, we have Jerry Gruenfelder. Right here, we have Warren Gallagher, Alex McLean, and Nicole Schubert. So here's how this works. Each person will come up to the podium. They can use the microphone if they wish, they don't have to. They will have five minutes to tell you about themselves. Around 30 seconds left, I will give them a little warning. You have 30 seconds left, so that they can kind of wrap up. And we'll do that by pulling names out of a hat. Whoever we pull first, we'll go first. And then after each candidate gets to speak about him or herself, they will come back up to the podium, and then you will be allowed to ask questions. So what happens is, they have another five minutes to answer your questions. But I only set the timer when they're speaking. So I'm not going to, someone may ask a five-minute question, which shouldn't happen. So here's where I give a little bit of ground rules. Tonight, you're here to learn about the candidates. It's not to give your opinion about the candidate, or to say something bad about the candidate. If you don't like the candidate, don't vote for them. That's what I always say. But have respect this evening, and just ask a question. So please don't get upset with me if I stop you. And I've had to do that before, where I say, excuse me, can you just ask your question? Because that's what we're here for, to learn about the candidates. And candidates, I have to say to you too, when your five minutes is up... Yeah, I didn't say that. But one year, I almost had to get the hook on the candidate. It was like, time's up, time's up. So please have that same respect for the audience. No, it wasn't you, actually. It was not you. So that's pretty much how it works. So are we ready?
When you come up, if you want to use the mic, just have the mic up. Alright, let's see who the lucky person is. Who has the phone? Alright. I don't want to start, but I think... No pressure. Well, Jerry did give us his eight timer, Julie. You might have to... We don't have to start yet. Okay, first, Nicole. Right, Nicole, don't start until we're done.
I wonder if I can set the microphone here, you know? It's not in my face, but... Don't do that. I don't have this thing. How about that? I think it's on that. Hello?
Hello? There we go. Thank you to HEPTO for hosting this evening, to Mrs. Hens for moderating, and for all of you coming out tonight, and those of you who are watching online. My name is Nicole Falcone-Schubert, and I am proud to say that I am Hopatcon grown. Throughout my childhood, I loved all aspects of school. So when I graduated from Hopatcon High School, I decided to make education my profession. Teaching brings me immense joy. And over the past 17 years, I've learned that children are the most successful in school when their families and communities are involved and invested in their education. My husband Joe and I bought our home in the same neighborhood as my parents, and down the street from my brother's family, because we wanted our children to grow up here. Joe is a math teacher, and I teach English in the Special Education Department at Morrison's High School in Rockaway. Clearly, education is very important to us. We have two children, Rocco and Giada, who are both enrolled here in the Hopatcon schools. Rocco and G have thrived here, and I attribute that to each teacher's unique way of making learning fun and the overall nurturing staff in each building. My kids are generally happy to go to school, because they feel safe and supportive, and that's all a parent can ask for. My family is proud to be members of the Hopatcon tribe. We are warriors, hawks, little chiefs. My position on the Hopatcon Elementary PTO has been the most rewarding of all of those positions. As the editor, I love keeping busy parents, like me and you, in the loop by sending emails, texts, posts, newsletters, and volunteering at our events. Last September, after attending board meetings for the past couple of years, I decided to run for the Board of Education, because I was concerned. We did not have a permanent superintendent. With each new interim, the district's vision was constantly shifting. But now that Mr. Di Benedetto is our superintendent, my reason for running has changed. He is committed to the children of this town, and I want to work beside Mr. Di Benedetto as a board member to help support his vision for the students of Hopatcon. The Board of Education's most important decision is choosing the superintendent. The superintendent is the chief executive officer on the school board. It is the superintendent's responsibility to recommend action for board approval, and it is the superintendent's duty to implement the board's decision. It's not a board member's job to create a line item budget, to write the curriculum, or to enact a private agenda. And I don't have an agenda that I want to impose if I get on the board. But I want to tell you what I value the most as a mom, as a teacher, and as a resident. Most importantly, all students, all types of learners, need to be the district's primary focus. If the students need it, we need to figure out a way to make it happen. We are a small district, but we are a resourceful group. Let's not forget that we moved an entire school over a weekend. Additionally, the superintendent should work with the experts. Those experts are the teachers and the staff who spend more time with our children on any given weekday than we get to. Our teachers are some of the most devoted educators I've had this ledger to work with. The district should be working with the power professionals, the secretaries, the administrators, the custodians, and the teachers, because an appreciated staff means you're going to get a well-educated student. And lastly, if we live in Hopatcon, we should use the school system. If there is something that we don't like about it, we should try and make it better. Looking elsewhere to educate our children is not the answer. Making this district as great as it can be is the ultimate goal. So as a Hopatcon education board member, I plan to bring an educator's insight, a parental perspective, and a lifelong residence background to the table. Over the next three years, I hope to teach my children that it is important to give back to the community. Hopefully, I can inspire Rocco and Giada, and my nephews Luca and Anthony, and Reagan and Kelsey, and all of your children that do the same in the future, because we should all be proud to be Hopatcon grown. Thank you.
Allison.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Small crowd, unfortunately. But I'm very happy to be here. I'm Alex McLean. I think I've had an opportunity over the last couple of years, as have most of you. I'm glad you're all here. I'm glad to be here. And I want to thank HEPTO, the organization that organized this event, the candidates that are always doing a good job, I'm seeing. I've had the pleasure of serving on the board the last three years. And I've had the distinct privilege to serve as your board vice president for the last few years. And as the chair of the commemorative overseas finance facilities, transportation, and security for the district. I can tell you, it's an amazing amount of work. And when we talk about building up a community, taking care of our kids, doing all those things, you know, we always talk about, lots of people talk about the 80-20, I think, unfortunately, within the district. You know, it's about 5% keep things going, 95% don't. So, you know, I want to thank Jerry and Warren for the work. Because any candidate from the public office, whether you hold a public office or you're running as a candidate, you know, you're really putting yourself on the front. It's not a easy job. I can tell you, I haven't gone through the campaign the last time, and now having been in the public spotlight in town for three years. It's really not easy. But I'm willing to do it again. And I'm willing to do it again, because I have an awful lot of hope in the district. I truly care about Hopatcon. 20 years ago, a little over 20 years ago, my wife and I decided to move here. We decided we were going to raise our family here. And I hope the day that I take my last step and say that my living room's in Hopatcon. You know, I think that, you know, they have all, every year, these surveys come out where they have the best towns to live in, in New Jersey, the best places to raise children. And I see no reason why Hopatcon can't be right there on the top of the list. We have all the necessary ingredients, and we can do it. And it starts, my personal opinion, with fantastic school. Three years ago, and I think many of the reasons most people jump into this is they have opinions, they have concerns, they have thoughts about how things are going. And, you know, I had some real concerns myself. And Warren and I took a look at things, and he and I didn't know each other. And I think it was a couple of months before the campaign, we were introduced, sat down, we shared some of a lot of the same concerns, some of the same thoughts. We don't always agree on that much. But we do sit down and exchange our various thoughts, why he thinks something one way and why I think something the other way. We have a good healthy debate. And I think that's what the board does, and that's what it should do for the best outcome. Every single board member that I've seen in my three years, unequivocally, and I have zeroed out every single one of them, all they want to do is one thing, and that's make the district better. Warren and I said we were going to do three things last year. We ran it three years ago. We said we were going to cut administrative expenses that weren't impacting directly student instruction and achievement. Because when we looked at it, our administrative expenses per student were some of the highest in the state, highest amongst our peer group, about 39 districts. We ranked the highest amount we're spending on administration and overhead relative to everyone else. And our administrators, you know, whether you think they should be or not, are some of the highest they've been in the state. Super, 30 seconds. We said we would take that money and invest it in the student program. But in fantastic makerspace here, fantastic makerspace at the middle school, breaking ground on the high school, air conditioning in this building, five security officers armed to protect our children. We're going to have a new construction program, new cosmetology program. There's wonderful things going on. And we said, all along, we did that without raising the tax. Thank you, everybody.
Alright, hello, good evening. I definitely wanted to thank everyone for inviting us tonight. HEPTO does really good work, I think we all know that. My name is Warren Gallagher, I'm a certified financial planner. Currently, we have two children in our district, in middle school and high school. And three years ago, I decided I wanted to help our district for their sakes and the sakes of all the children in our district. I've coached Little League and rec basketball for over 10 years here in town, in this room. It's actually a wonderful feeling to be back in this room, because I've been here many, many hours with the children. In fact, I know many of the kids now in our schools, and they are the pride of Hopatcon. Over the past few years, it has been my great honor to represent our district as a current board member. And three years ago, we ran on a vision, and that vision was to improve our district. But, number one, don't raise taxes. Number two is cut out wasteful spending. And then number three was use that money, use that savings, to invest in our children. People told us, you can't do that, that you must raise taxes every year and just spend money endlessly, and that'll fix the problems, but it doesn't. We were told we couldn't do it. Well, ladies and gentlemen, I'm proud to say, we did do it. We have not raised taxes during our tenure. We have cut out enormous amounts of wasteful spending. And we have taken this money and invested in our children. So for example, and I apologize, Alex talked about a couple of them, and I'm going to talk about them as well. We are going to offer classes in cosmetology for our kids who want to go to work right after high school and make a very good living doing. We are starting a new construction shop for those kids that love using their hands. And we all know they can make a fantastic living doing. We are also building a new science lab in the high school. Now we're going to have what Alex referred to before as Makerspace, and think of that as a STEAM lab. And that stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, that's important too, and Math. So we are now going to have Makerspace STEAM laboratory all the way from the lower grades all the way through 12th grade for our future sciences doctors and engineers. We are bringing back advanced level classes. We are bringing programs that are specifically designed for our population of 1,500 students for their preferred future path, all of our kids. Soon, you'll be able to take college-level courses in a Hopatcon high school. In the future, children will be able to get an associate's degree in high school with a major discount in both money and time. Now, we also know it's a strange new world out there. A lot of us are parents, and Alex and I are parents, and we are very concerned about school security. We led to charge, to hire five armed security guards to protect our children. We have worked with the professional educators for security protocols. This is very serious business, and we will always make sure our children are secure. I can promise you that. Lastly, little things that are big things. We added air conditioning in Durbin, as Alex mentioned. We've done new interior doors and windows installed throughout the high school. And lastly, and so importantly, we changed our leadership. Folks, we're never going to get anywhere without the right leader. It's just that simple. And we found him in Art Di Benedetto. He has forgotten more knowledge about education than I will ever know in his decades of experience. He is the right man. He's the right person for the job of turning our district around. And I am so proud to have voted yes to bring him here. Folks, this is what happens when you have financial professionals, such as Alex and I, doing the budgeting, planning, and the cost savings. And as you may know, the state, its infinite wisdom, over at Sarcal, decided to take away 90% of our statement over the next few years. Just raising taxes will not help. We can raise it to the max, it's not enough. What else are we going to do? Only a careful plan of proper budgeting, priorities, spending cuts, and investments in our children is going to get out of it, help us get out of this major, major financial hole. Thank you. This is the time to have seasoned financial professionals on the board. Please don't change horses midstream, especially now that the state has saddled Hopatcon with a major challenge, no less. You can invest in our children. We can significantly improve our district. We can add many new programs, and we can do this all without raising taxes. Thus, I hope you'll consider voting for McLean and Gallagher on Tuesday, November 5. Keep the financial professionals on the job. Thank you so much.
I know there's only one last, but I'm going to give...
I'm going to guess Jerry.
Bob Smith?
No. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before I begin, I have a confession to make. I was really worried about coming here tonight, because you know who was sponsoring this event? HEPTO. This past Monday, I was happy to receive the format for this evening's event. I anxiously read through the format. It told me that each candidate will be given up to five uninterrupted minutes to introduce ourselves. Then I came to the following restriction, and I quote, "The five-minute time slots will be strictly enforced at the point of a gun if necessary." Seriously. Napoleon said that an army marches on its stomach. If he were in Hopatcon tonight, he would say that the Hopatcon school district marches on its volunteers, and that, etc. I'm going to change gears for a moment, because I really would like to recognize both Alex and Warren for their three years of service for the Board of Education. And I would also say that I consider it a privilege to appear on the same ballot with Nicole Falcone-Schubert. As a native of Hopatcon and a graduate of its school system, Nicole represents an outstanding example of the best about Hopatcon and its public school system. But I know that tonight is your opportunity to meet the candidates. You have every right to know who you're voting for. Bobby Kennedy was the commencement speaker at my graduation from Fordham College. And I will never forget what he said. "Some men see things as they are and say, 'Why?'" "I dream things that never work and say, 'Why not?'" I'm here because my grandson is a kindergarten student in the Hopatcon public school. He has attended the preschool program at Hudson-Maxum. And he's now enrolled in the kindergarten class at the Durbin Avenue School. My family has been overjoyed with his experience so far. He has had outstanding teachers. But my real fear is that this fabulous experience will not continue for him or for any other children. And what I'm talking about, I get dry and emotional when I talk about these things. I'm talking about the Ruben cuts in state aid. Sooner or later, the board's going to be faced with making a series of disastrous decisions. And it's going to necessitate some very hard choices. I don't want these cuts to damage or destroy the exceptional quality of education that we have. I want to be on the board to help make those very difficult decisions. I believe that my academic background, both in finance and in education, as well as my experience as a classroom teacher, gives me the unique tools to help the board and the administration make these decisions. Now, there are a number of planks in my platform. I will implement tried and proven methods to save money within our existing budget structure. Oh, no. I will reinvest the savings back into the classroom. I will work on a long-range plan. I will work hard to establish a relationship between our students and world-class mathematicians at NYU. And just so I don't run over my time, I'm going to change my campaign motto to read, "Don't just be proud, be Hopatcon proud." Thank you.
Mrs. Schubert, if you can come on up? This one's going to be a little harder to come to. We don't have to start yet. Question for Mrs. Schubert? Hello, we need to stand a bit. One sec. So you have an interesting perspective, because you are a teacher in an own school. And I noticed that a lot of your comments, I'm not contemplating upon it, there's a question. A lot of your comments at the board meetings have been about teacher salaries and such. So being on the other side of the fence, having to deal with that, tell me what value do you think Mrs. Schubert is going to do? When you learned how that works from a board member's spot, are you going to make that work in everybody's favor? But you may find out that it's not quite as easy as you would like it to be. So tell me a little bit about how you're going to handle that.
Sure. Or the reason why I'm running is because I want to see what it's like on the other side. I am an NJDEA member, and I've gone to a lot of training through that organization. And then I just recently went to a school board's meeting, training. And it's very interesting, because you really hear the exact opposite at one meeting and the other. And I think that's part of the problem. Because we shouldn't be working against each other. Without the teachers, and the secretaries, and the custodians, and the administrators, we would just have walls here. So one thing I would not be allowed to be a part of is the negotiation process. So I wouldn't be on the negotiation team. But I would be allowed to offer input about a contract or an agreement that would work between the school and the teachers' union. I do feel a need to speak up for them at meetings, because I am only one of a few who does. And I feel very indebted to them, like I said. Because they are with my kids all day long. They have to make sure they're learning how to read and write, that they're learning to be good people, that they're treating others with respect. So to me, making sure they have a contract is going to give them something to less to think about, and they can focus on our children. So I do speak up a lot about them. I'm sure once I get on the other side, I'm going to see that it's not as cut and dry and black and white as I think it is. But I do have an open mind, and I understand that. So I would also like to hope, and what I would like to see is that maybe it's not so much lawyer to lawyer. And I think that Mr. G would be a good candidate to be a negotiator between the... And I think that Mr. D would be a good candidate to be a negotiator between the school board and the HEA because when we get lawyers involved, they don't always tend to understand what we need here. And if we can get this all wrapped up, we can move forward and focus on all those great things that we'd like to see happen here in Hopecat Con.
Other questions for Mrs. Huber?
Hi, it's Hi-Horn. As a former educator and administrator in a school not far from here, when I first started teaching in 2001, we had a handful of students from Hopecat Con, a handful. A third of our population was from Hopecat Con. What can you do to entice some of those families back to Hopecat Con?
So, I actually was at a gathering this weekend with friends who send their kids out of district, and it's an uncomfortable situation because I'm a loyalist, as you can hear. And I'm a firm believer, if you don't like something, you go fix it, you help out, get your hands dirty. So, when I was speaking to a lot of the parents who send their kids out of district and asked why, I was really surprised by their answer, and most people said it was because their friends were doing it. They didn't set foot into the building here, they didn't meet with the teachers. When I first was enrolling my son, there were rumblings, okay? It wasn't good. So, instead of doing what those people did and say, "I'm just going to fill out the form and go somewhere else," I met with Mrs. Henz, actually, I don't know if you remember. She gave me a tour of the school, sat me in on the class, and I loved what I saw. So, the first thing I would say to the person is, "Go and meet with the teachers, go and meet with the staff. You're going to see that they're not only great educators, they love our kids." One of my favorite things about living here and sending my kids here is I see them at the three-in-one deli, and I see them at the football games and the nighttime events. I'm telling you right now, I like where I teach, but I don't see that many teachers attending things outside of the school day there. The dedication here, I think, is unmatched. So, I would say to those people, "If you left, come back. You have to take a tour, talk to parents like me who've had a good experience, and maybe I can help you navigate the way." Because anytime I've had an issue, I've said, "My kids love coming to school here." Have there been problems? Yes. But I use chain of command, contact the proper teacher, administrator, even aide has helped me through a situation. I didn't want to go too high up the chain, and I've gotten a resolution. That's what I would suggest.
Twenty-six seconds. I'll give another question. What would you vote differently against the past? What you've observed over the board's last couple of meetings, what would you have not voted for that maybe has passed?
Over the past couple of meetings, I don't think anything since Mr. D has been here. I'm not a finance person. I'm in charge of the budget at home. My husband gives me the paycheck, and I pay the bills. Don't be mad at me, Jeff. But I understand that in order to keep things up to date, I invest in my home. And just because a lot of people on the board don't think that taxes should go up, if we need money to make the school better, it's okay to invest that money.
Question for...
Yes, sir.
You talked about the budget has not increased in the past couple of years. Teachers are still without a contract. Is that somewhat related that we haven't given them money, so we're keeping taxes down? And is there a plan to settle it somehow? Just one more time. When I pick the kids up, pick them from either side, the teachers' cars, two years, no contract, it doesn't exactly look good. Is there a plan or are we getting close to settlement?
So, what I can tell you is my wife has been a teacher here at Hopecat Con for, I think, just over fifteen years. So, I am completely walled off from all of that. I can't discuss the contract. I'm not a member of NJEA, but my wife is, so I can't be in the room. I have no idea what the status of that is, and I just, I don't ask any questions, and I'm not told any information, and that's the way it should be. My understanding is the teachers are continuing to work under the contract that was in existence that expired or terminated, I'm not sure which. And then when they finally reach an agreement, if there's a raise, which I'm sure there will be, then that would go retroactive to the date the contract ended. I think that they'll eventually, you know, this isn't going to go unbroken, right? Art is in the rooms. He is part, very much part of the negotiation, which I agree with the poll, it's fantastic. And, you know, at the end of the day, I think that in order for it to work, nobody can leave the room one hundred percent happy, right? I think otherwise, somebody's feeling like they lost out somewhere somehow. So, I'm confident it'll be resolved in a good time. But, you know, the issue of wages has been not an issue with taxes or, it's had no impact on balancing the budget. We didn't do that at the back of the issue.
Another question?
Yes, sir. For about a part of twelve years now, I've heard the district around, heard the system around. You do the same thing over and over again, expecting different results in the classic definition of a ten, but what's going to be different? Couldn't agree more. And that's why we have to, in fact, right? If you take a look at the, what they call the maker's space here, you take a look at the maker's space at middle school, it's a completely different way of learning, right? And I think that the results will prove up on that. Now, we're going to do it at the high school because they're going for the middle school. And if you go into the high school science room, labs, I did, and it's, looks exactly like the one I had. And I went to high school a long time ago, a long time ago. It's utterly ridiculous. The, I lost my train of thought for a moment, but the question before was, "How do you bring these kids back?" And the answer is, just like anything else, you have to compete. You have to compete. You have to compete with Roxbury, you have to compete with Jeff, you have to compete with Leonard. If they're doing something that's enticing Hopecat Con children to leave, go there, we need to understand what it is, and what are we going to do to fix it? And it's not that hard. I don't believe it's that hard. If you just look at Leonard, they have a lot of different programs. And I'll use sports for an example. They got field hockey, we don't. They got lacrosse, we don't. They got a JV soccer team, we don't. They just put in a brand-new turf field, we don't, right? They have lots of other courses that we don't have, right? That's a problem. So, we have to be strategic about what is a visitor. First of all, our kids should have the best, right? If they want to play field hockey, they should be able to play field hockey here, right? If they want to play lacrosse, they ought to be able to play lacrosse here. And it's do it. Find the money, get it done. I said, "I'm going to take full credit for this because it's deserved." I was the one who sat in the finance committee with Art Di Benedetto three, four, five, six months ago and said, "Art, these state cuts are a huge problem, and they're going to be monumentally a difficult deal." I said, "We have to find some stuff to sell." We sold that cell tower, two, over $2 million. We could do a lot with $2 million, but I can tell you what's happened in the district over twelve years, turning it around, turning it around, turning it around. The answer's always been, "We can raise taxes two percent, let's do that." I don't know where it went. I don't know where it went. We don't have the things that everybody else has. Why not? Where, what happened? I would say that's... And most of the overhead, as we stated, is a high ratio. Thank you. Nicole Harvick.
May I?
That's up to the board.
One more stop? Twenty-four seconds. No, you have time to ask a question.
Wonderful. Not to be a stick of my... Okay, I understand the necessity for sports and teams and getting everybody together and everything. If you took those resources and put them into something like a zero percent failure rate, or ninety percent of our kids go to college, I'd be willing that there would be cities that were busing their kids to that.
So, that's a great point, right? So, we've been able to successfully raise the graduation rate. Three years ago, it was below the state average. Now, it's just like the public state average. What does that take? No. It's literally a couple of kids a year, right? Four, five kids. They'll go to every single, and see, this is why I think we need to think differently, right? All of a sudden, we could have the best graduation rate in the year, in the state, if we just figure out, "Who are those kids that need the help, and let's give them the help." Thank you.
Hello. You may leave. Please.
Hello.
Yes, sir.
So, your partner was talking about perhaps dirt field, field hockey, lacrosse. Is that something that's actually in the works and the plans, or just fine?
I would say right now, what we're concentrating on is the classroom because they're, part of the priorities in budgeting is, there's only so much money to go around. And what we want to do is, we want to keep our interest. So, if we, if there are administrators that we can possibly live without, and it's tough, we want to make sure we don't lose the teachers much as possible. We know that they're the backbone of this district. New Jersey's number one in the entire nation in education, and that's a lot to do with the teachers in this state. So, there is a long-term facilities plan. That's where we say we want to do all the things from the track to the football field to the roof, and we plan it over the next five years. So, today, there's one goal, two years from now, there's another, and over the next five years, and it's all written down. So, I would say not today, right now, we're concentrating on kind of turning the ship around. We wanted to get the right leader first, then we wanted to make sure our priorities in order, then we wanted to make sure our budgeting was okay. And I'm really proud to say, I think we've done that. It's just, as you can imagine, it never stops when we go.
Actually, I have two questions, so I'll ask you one, and then circle back around. That's my question.
Oh, well, if you couldn't ask your one, and then the lady behind you asks her, and then if you have time, come back to you.
That's what I said.
Oh, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. You specifically mentioned these great cuts that have taken place. I'd like to hear specifically some of the areas that we're targeting for the cuts. Is it in the overhead building surround administration?
I would love to. You know, that's, I'm a math guy, I love math, and it's just my thing, I'm kind of geeked that way. So, Alex and I, we went through the budget line by line, and we would find savings in supply, we would find savings in administration, we would...
That's a broad term, specific administration. I'm looking at the salaries of some of these, of all of these administrators that we have throughout the district. Why? As small as we are, why?
You're saying that we have too many administrators in...
They're overpaid, the results aren't there in terms of graduation rates, the results aren't there in terms of state performance level testing, and we keep hearing, "We're going to turn the ship around." Why we keep throwing good money out the bat, paying them through the nose, now we have this ninety percent cut from state funding, and we're going to continue to pay through the nose, where's the performance-based education of our kids? If the kids aren't benefiting, then rotate the staff.
One of the things that, to answer your question, I will say is, I am not a professional educator, and I give a lot of kudos to everybody that is. I'm not a professional administrator. What I lean on is our chief school administrator, which is our superintendent, Art. And he has met everybody. He comes to us, and he'll say, "Okay, there's X amount of people, these are the people that maybe we can find some savings." Alex and I are on the operations committee, that's the finance committee, that's where all, we make all the decisions, then bring them to a foreboard developer. So, I would say that the smartest thing to do is to listen to the person that has the most knowledge about who he thinks is doing the best and the worst. We listen to that, we take action on that. I personally don't know enough of who would be the right to keep or not, but if we count on our excellent superintendent to help us make the decisions, if we have to, because we also don't want to cut too far either, that doesn't make sense either. But you hit the nail on the head. Where are we getting our money's worth?
Where's the performance?
We're getting our money's worth? No problem. If not, then we're going to question it.
If I go to a job ten years, and I don't perform, I'm not going to last ten years yet.
You're not going to last ten days?
Ten years.
Please circle back.
I'm going to circle around to a different area. I keep hearing that students are losing roles there. What plan do you have to get them to return?
Two-hundred-and-sixty-six kids every morning wake up and go to another district besides the Pac-11. Now, I don't have a lot of time, so feel free to ask me after, but I will put it to you this way. Our students are broken down by their test scores, which we all know is not everything, but that's how the state ranks us. And if we had five more A-students stay in this district, we're ranked at a letting go. That's how close we are to turning this around. So, my answer is, why would those people want to come back? And I believe some of the things I talked about before, a cosmetology circle, a construction shop, a science lab, new leadership, putting some money into facilities, I believe people are going to wake up and say, "You know, Mom, I really want to, I want to be a hairdresser, and the Pac-11's got that, why send me all the way over to here or there? Let's stay here." Or, "God, I'm a triple-A student here, and I'm getting a hundred and two on everything. What's a Pac-11?" Well, we're keeping our advanced-level courses, we're doing STEAM. And so, kids are going to wake up and say, "Gee, maybe let's stay here. I don't want to get on a bus for a half hour to wherever it may be." So, I think it's the programs that we're beginning to be implementing. We talked about investments. We're going to spend $700,000 over the next six months in those programs I mentioned. That's an awful lot of money, and we think it's going to make a huge difference. By the way, a couple of things. We had an architect in a while ago, and she had made a presentation to the public. And one of the things she said is a new protocol. So, little things like that, I think, make a big difference, too. The front of the entrance to our school, that if we upgraded it. At the high school, I'm sorry, yes. So, it's little things like that we think are going to make a big difference to keep the kid, the children come back. We need to give them a reason to come back, and we think more programs are going to help us do it.
There we go. Another question?
Do you want to answer a second question?
No, I actually did, and when I started, I was so fast.
That's okay.
Any other questions? Yeah, I'm thirty seconds. I do have one for you. So, I met Joe Puccaro, our assistant superintendent, and I think it's been a great decision. There's a lot of comments about, "Why are we hiring another administrator?" Tell everybody the value that Mr. Puccaro is bringing to the school, because I think everybody needs to know that. He's not just a high salary, he's a valuable asset to our buildings that I work on, and the others why.
Thank you, and I agree. We just hired an assistant superintendent. The way the budgeting worked, because you might say, "Didn't you tell us we're cutting out our assistant superintendent?" Is, our superintendent came to us and recommended there were three administrators that we could barely live without, and their salaries were twice the salary of the assistant superintendent. So, we still got a significant savings for our budget. We then used some of that savings and hired an assistant superintendent. So, why did we do that? The answer is, is because our superintendent cannot be in ten different places at once. We need an assistant superintendent to help him, to be his right-hand man. And quite frankly, Art has said to us, he's going to stay for a certain period of time. One day, we hope that Joe will then take over as superintendent after several years of on-the-job training. So, that was kind of the goal of getting somebody that writes grants, he's already gotten several grants. Oh, I'm sorry. So, feel free to ask me more after. Thank you.
Jeff will be here.
You weren't getting about reasons in mind?
I love it. Always good.
I hope you're all sympathetic, but my knees hurt when I get up.
Okay, question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we've met several occasions, and thank you for attending as many events as you do, because I see you at everything, and you spend hours at BAN faculty just to enjoy our BAN. Tell me about your, you've mentioned that you have a lot of education experience, written grants. Tell me about that part of your prior career that's going to benefit our school.
Probably the best answer to your question is, a few years back, when the state of New Jersey recruited me to take over the East Orange Board of Education, which had a $44 million budget and an $8.4 million deficit.
Probably the best answer to your question is, a few years back, when the state of New Jersey recruited me to take over the East Orange Board of Education, which had a $44 million budget and an $8.4 million deficit. Now, that's going to be difficult for anybody in this room to understand just what a situation like that was. But what it allowed me to do was to build everything from scratch. So, I put in an investment program for the investment of surplus funds that generated $1,250,000 in one year. So, I'm going to do it now because interest rates were different back then. I put in a new accounting system. I put in a new payroll system. I put in a new purchasing system. So, I know that part of it from the ground up and from the inside out. But I was also a classroom teacher in the South Bronx for eight and a half years. And I know how, I know how important it is to retain quality teachers, to invest in quality teachers. So, I feel that as a prospective member of the Board of Education, I can find at least $1 million in our current budget that I can put back into the program. That's without, that's only becoming more efficient at what we do. A case in point, does anybody here know how we pay our bills? We pay our bills by writing paper checks. We take those paper checks, put them in window envelopes, and we put first-class post on the outside of the window envelope. Corporations haven't been doing that for 30 years. And if we, if we paid those bills electronically, that alone would save $75,000. So, those are the, oh, one other really, really interesting initiative that I will push for if I'm successfully elected to the board. I want to put all of our purchases through a credit card. Now, before you get upset with me, the credit card will be a tightly controlled credit card, and it will give us 2% back on every cash purchase that we make. Just by doing that, just by doing that, we save $400,000 a year that we can put back into the program. One other thing that really isn't necessarily germane to your question, but I've read an awful lot about transportation problems in town. One bus was supposedly speeding on Maxim Drive and over the yellow line. Now, I can tell you that if my grandson happened to have been a passenger on that bus, I would be speaking to you today with handcuffs on and change because that's not something that you have a right to expect. So, what I would also do would be to commission a study through the Rutgers Graduate School of Business Administration to find out what it would cost us to bring transportation back inside. Because my feeling is that if you were a bus driver in HopeHakon, you would be extra specially cautious and careful because this is where you live, and you would treat those kids as if they were yours.
I just want to note, do you know specifically, we talked about multiple classes, 90% of the reduction in aid. What does that translate to, real dollars, or the dollar reduction they're taking from us?
You know, I don't know. I don't know. But one of the things that I would push for is, number one, get those numbers subtracted. And then, number two, develop a five- or a seven-year plan to go out over five or seven years to see what those reductions were going to do, and to find out at the same time if there was any private grant money out there that was available to plug those holes. And I also, I also would fight vigorously to oppose cuts in state aid because I believe they're unequal. Because if you take a dollar in state aid away from the HopeHakon public schools, it's not the same as taking a dollar in state aid away from the Princeton public schools. It has a... Thank you. Thank you for the question.
So, the candidates will be around. We are going to stick around for a little while if you have any difficult questions. Thank you all for coming. We encourage you to exercise your right to go.
Good job.